I call the order of the meeting of the Lakeside. I can't say Planning Commission anymore, but they'll be at the site council. And at eight, so eleven at six P M. And everybody stand for the flag, you ladies.
I'm invited to be the stewardess of the United States of America. And to the Republicans who wish to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Howlin' pointer. Rob Ward. Adam Hand.
Here.
Nikki Wood.
Here.
Tom Miller. Jim Carlisle.
Here.
Mark Crouch, all is present. All right, we have citizen comments. Are there any more comment? Ors? So we have one citizen tonight who would like to make a comment. Denise Ford, can you come up to the podium? And go ahead and state your name and residence. You just have to say what city it is.
Denise Ford, Route six hundred Tierra Street. Corner of Woodland and Tierra. Which involves logging. Okay, I'll just read this.
Take your time.
Lakeside is in a period of economic change since the passing of a very lenient A T V ordinance. The town now allows new access to those seeking to ride their cars. Also allows the all-terrain vehicles on roads within the city limits. This access, which is unparalleled on the Oregon coast, has brought boom riders into the city, both as visitors and potential homeowners in spite of the only property values in the area. Tourism is a crucial part of Lakeside and is the one and only city in the state without any property tax. Lakeside City revenue is largely generated through visiting via the transit tax on motels, R V cars, and B and Bs, in addition to sewage processing and unusual kickbacks for tobacco and liquor sales. I'm here at this meeting for my concerns to our new mayor and city council. I have, I live at the corner of Tierra and Woodland. My husband and I have been here in our sixth year now to ease up with my two sons and daughter. We had lived in Beaverton for well since nineteen ninety-four. So, on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, our community's employer began to change and not for the good. It has not been good for our Lakeside community, especially for all the property owners adjacent to the seven-acre tree hill owned by Mr. Mike Mass. Mr. Mass has a logging business, which is not fair in our community in the best. He logged property on Hilltop Road with intention to create a small subdivision six years ago. And all the requirements have not been completed through the Oregon State's forestry mission. So this time, Mr. Mass subcontracted this logging of the seven-acre land, Hudson Logging out of Coos Bay, and thought he would be free of any responsibility or liabilities for damage should that occur. According to two employees that I spoke to on several occasions as the Oregon Department of Forestry, the soil compaction and drain, uh, land drainage report should have been submitted to the city of Lakeside prior to logging. Today, I haven't been able to find anyone that I was aware of any of these reports. I have over four hundred photographs I've taken during this whole process that started on the twenty-ninth of August. We're experiencing a lot of runoff. And it's been a nightmare. And I gladly show anyone those pictures. Now, I think due to the fact that all the logging equipment and the logging trucks that were used, this road is ruined. It's an ugly mess. It tracks in dirt into our barn from our car. You have to shovel it out. You can't water and hose it out or it doesn't get milked. So, the northeast corner of Tierra and Woodland intersections new drainage ditch may have been compromised by one of those large logging tow trucks crushed on that one side. So, because of the economic conditions of Lakeside property owners have to do the maintaining of the ditches in front of their property if they have them. And we can no longer do it due to the fact that ours are almost, we only have about that much left of that drainage pot left to drain. It's that tall. Our ditch is, you can't get into the ditch. You would sink like quicksand. And we can't weed whacker anything along our ditches. Our road is just a mess. And part of the road is sunk. The paved part. The rest of it, they brought in, I think, four loads of large rock to, so they could get their vehicles up that hill. And it's, it's an ugly mess. So, as of February nineteenth, there's been no Hudson people out there on that hill. And it is, it's, we know it's non-existent. We need to have some of those roads.
Thank you very much. It sounds like it's a pretty serious situation. I'm thinking maybe we should put this on the next month's agenda.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Um, I think Rick, as I had inquired about it at the beginning of this, um, you said D E Q.
D E Q will fall apart in that situation.
Okay, because I thought there was a test done at some point about the runoff and stuff.
It's only in danger is drinking water.
Oh, okay.
So I've talked to D E Q, I've talked to several other places.
Yeah.
But.
It sounds to me like it's a pretty complicated problem. Would you need some time to put this together, Rick, and go ready in our next meeting?
It would be good that the staff provided some written report as it relates to the efforts that we have tried to deal with this situation for the last four months since I've been here. But, and she's right, she's absolutely correct. Uh, no, no, no mistake about that. And it is full of alphabet soup as it relates to the state agencies involved. But I, I would think that the council could appreciate something from staff as it relates to what we've been doing as relates to this particular matter before you have a discussion on it.
I remember getting involved very, the very beginning of this one, so continue to think so. So let's, we'll, we'll put some really good information together on this. We'll see you next meeting. Thank you, thank you very much. All right. So since that's the only corner I got, uh, let's move on to our next agenda item.
Let me look in the room to see if I've got anybody.
Oh, yeah. The outside world.
And I've got ten participants on it. And I've got no request to speak.
All right. So without further ado, I am very pleased to welcome our gentleman here to talk to us about the law enforcement measure that's going to be on the ballot.
Well, we're gonna lead off with, with Gabe.
Thank you. All right, speak quietly, so I can make some things. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, proud, I really, really appreciate, appreciate your silence. I understand we're in a bit of a time crunch, so I'll try to be specific. Uh, we're here to talk about the unpleasant idea of taxes, unfortunately. So the, it's kind of the genesis of this, the county's a great fiscal shortfall this year, as for the general areas, unfortunately. And in looking at that, we really kind of explored what the options were in the last oh, more than a year now, it's been a while that we've been looking at this. Everything from districts to base sales to the idea of looking at even supporting individual deputies for individual areas selling land and everything. And what we kind of landed on as the county, and by me, I mean the commissioners, to help with that is the idea of levy. But rather than just going with the status quo of what has been, it was brought up, it would be good to offer more, especially in law enforcement, because things have gotten so bad. A lot of that is to help the jail not being open and all that. I like to blame on legislation and on drugs. On measure one-ten, it's really hurt us through that. So, um, in this measure, it'll be on May, May twenty-first is the final date, is ninety-eight cents on the thousand. And what's that, the increase in services, what that'll do is another pod in the jail, another forty-nine beds. Right now, it's funded to ninety-eight, which we should have opened up by the end of the month. Training's going a little slower than it's been for the whole third week, it's probably the fourth week, right around there. So we'll have ninety-eight beds, we've been funded two careers, finally. I was hired about twenty-three people over the last sixteen months, sixteen of those deputies, which all were corrections, that is jail deputies. If we open a new pod, it'll be seven more, but seven more deputies is what we need to go forward and open another increase in capacity by fifty percent to a total of a hundred and forty-seven. Additionally, and I don't want to steal the DA's thunder, but it would fund two more in deputy district attorneys, which until telling us really important for, for prosecution of the backlog cases. A couple of other considerations. Is four thousand two desperate for three, that's recent legislation, was signed into law by Governor Kotek on the first of April. Thankfully, it wasn't April Fools' Day. And that's the re criminalization drugs. That'll take effect on September. It's an unclassified misdemeanor, but it has, it's twofold. One is hopefully it'll actually work this time, getting rid of it. But if it doesn't work, then we have, it'll be in jail. So we, even more so, we're going to need a jail space now. So, pretty important. It is, this, this levy is fully dedicated to the two things, just the jail and to the DA's office. And going to a special fund, actually, it's separated from the rest of the general fund, into a special fund, well, for those two things. It's a five-year levy. One of the questions we get a lot is what happens after the five years? The concept being that this is kind of a proof of service, see how it looks in five years, see if it helps. If we bite those hundred and forty-seven beds, hundred and fifty beds. And then at the end of that five years, look at, um, maybe look at the district, public safety district. The difference being a levy is a five-year, and when the sun sets goes away, first district is enduring forever. So, um, well, with the future. With that, I could go on forever, but I'm going to step down.
Evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Paul Fraser, the elected district attorney, at least until the end of this year. We're not running for reelection. Been doing this now come November, I've been forty years as prosecutor in the state of Corry. I'm here tonight because of this levy, and basically what I'm asking is, I need help. I need help. I've been the D A since two thousand eight, I was a deputy since nineteen ninety here. And another six years, Joe's been counting prior to that, but in my timeframe here, we have always been hanging on to these fingernails, if you will, in terms of staffing around. I'm budgeted for seven deputy DAs. Right now, I have five, because recently, we were down to four. There was whatever reason, there's been a shortage of lawyers who work in Ory. And if you've tried to go get a appointment with a lawyer lately, you might notice that my, several weeks ago, yeah. It's not just my office, it's, it's everybody. And my dad, who's a retired state trooper, he tells me that's not a penalty at all, but. As a result of what's happened, we've not been able to get to the thing that we want. Right now, we're about fourteen hundred cases. We haven't been able to just happen out here. We're triad every day. It's, okay, do I look at this shoplifting case, or do I work on this case where husband pumped on in life? That's what's happening in the triad. Frankly, what's happening is lower-level property crimes are getting shoved off to the side so that we can work on person, pride, for people who work. And it doesn't help that for some reason, we have a lot of murders in this county. I have five pending murder one and murder two cases right now. Which, that's all I'm working on, basically. I don't have time to help out with the other stuff that comes in. Every, even though we've had seven deputies for eons, we've done the best we could to keep up with the amount of cases coming. We can't do that. And last year, according to our case management system, we've had nearly eighty-nine hundred cases referred to us to look at. And can't do it with eight people. It's going to be hard to do it with ten. That's what'll happen if this levy passes, I'll be able to hire two more. I think the lawyer shortage is ending. I said I was at four. Hired one that started in February, and I just hired the one that's supposed to start June. And so, um, July, I'm only going to be down to one position, so I'm hoping that if the levy passes, I'll be able to build these other positions. But I need help. That's all there is to it. I can't do, I can't handle all the cases that are coming in right now. It's physically impossible for us to do that. So I, I need help. And that's why I'm here, the legislature's support. We just looked at a lot of different options. What can we do to solve this issue? And the only thing we can do with to give funds that we need new is a lot. There's other ideas out there, but it doesn't involve legislation, legislature, or getting people involved in Salem and things along the line. It might be a year or two years before we even see the dollar if we go that way, and that's not going to help us right there. I also need to have more jail beds to work with. The levy's going to be back up to a hundred. When I came to work here in nineteen ninety, we had the jail has capacity to hold two hundred and fifty people. The problem is that we don't have the money to pay for the staff to keep two hundred and fifty. When I came to work here, we were able, they had a staff. So what happened was, if you got convicted of a crime and were given jail time, you did your jail time. You did not get released because of all the crime. It didn't happen. And if a judge said you need to stay in jail or post security based on your background, you stay in jail until you post the security. Unfortunately, with the forty-nine bed jail, people aren't doing their sentences to get out early. And we're not, we don't have the room for people that we like to hold, which I mean, my people are reporting, they're looking at the jail mess. Okay, this new intake that's coming in, this guy that's in jail, do I charge him and ask him to stay in jail? Because if I do, who's coming in? It's kind of the shavings we're making every day. And unfortunately, if this levy doesn't pass because of the privilege what's going on today, forty-nine man jail, and five deputy DAs and the D A, is going to be the one. That's what's going to end up. Well, as I keep saying, we need your help, and we'll hopefully support us. If you have any questions, you can yell at Gabe.
It's supposed to say the best to last, but we reverse that. We're always some bad actors around here. You got the word, Clap. Appreciate the comments very much, Sheriff and our district attorney, Nate. They are, we're in trouble. And our people are in trouble, because we, there are few to know consequences. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm John Sweet, one of the commissioners. There are really few consequences for criminal behavior in Coos County right now. And they should be timely, and there should be certain consequences, shouldn't be, and they're neither. We looked long and hard, wouldn't, didn't take a rocket scientist to figure out where are the choke points in our public safety system is. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what a public safety system requires. There's about six convoe. You have patrol. The sheriff's deputies do patrol, city policemen do patrol, state police can do patrol. So that's share. The next step is prosecution. That's the DA's office. Whose responsibility is that? Not the state, not the city, state participates. It's the county. Courts, that's the counties. The jail, that's the counties. Rule probation, that's the counties. And juvenile, that's the county. So, five of the six parts of a successful public safety system are solely the responsibility of the county. And frankly, we just don't have the money to do the job that's required. Now, we took a hard look at this. We knew we were going to have to ask for more money. But we wanted to make sure that we were asking for as little as money as possible and still get to the problem. And the two choke points we found were in prosecution. We didn't have enough DAs, deputy DAs, to take care of the amount of crimes that we're experiencing in this county. Therefore, we have a one thousand four hundred person backlog. They don't know when, nor do we know when they'll be posted. So there goes, there's no title, there's no, no search. And the other was jail. It's a rotating, you know. Unless you commit rape or murder or something really serious, you're probably not going to get to spend much time in our jail. And it shouldn't be that way. We should always have space for a new customer. Before I forget about it, Gabe asked me to talk about, you know, what this tax levy of ninety-eight cents per thousand dollars assessed value would be to the average homeowner in the county. I'll just use a rounded up to a dollar, easy to do the math. But the average value, the average depraised value on which your taxes are assessed in this county is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per home. So that would be two hundred and fifty dollars per year for this little, about twelve dollars a month. This is what this we've got. And I realized that money for a lot of us is, is a problem. Uh, but when you break it down like that, it's, you know, really just a couple of big cups of coffee a day, that sort of. But it takes to pay for that. I would not expect people to support any tax levy if they felt that the county or whomever is seeking that tax was not being fiscally, fiscally responsive. But I'd like to dwell on that just a few minutes. Our county tax rate, not, not the tax rate that goes, that includes schools and cities and fire departments and all that, just what you pay to run the county is about one-third of what the average county and the state are. Two-thirds lower. And that's, and still we've been functioning. When I came here, we had over eighteen million dollars of debt. Next year will be completely out of debt. There'll be, the county had no debt whatsoever. We also had about seven, almost eight million dollars of unfunded liabilities, largely entirely due to the fact that the county had failed to close the land, the landfills they had. And state D E Q doesn't like that. And so they imposed fines on you, and eventually they collect. But there, and so we were able to get our landfills closed, do it ourselves, for money we had on hand, and eliminate that entire, well, if we have one million dollars, that's why I don't, it's fully funded, but. Used to have five hundred and fifty employees in the county. Today, we have three hundred and fifty. And were it not for a bill in our, uh, public health and mental health department because of federal funding of Medicaid, we'd be under three hundred people. So coming down from five fifty to three hundred, we, we were running really. People would say, well, the county has a big budget, certainly you can find another five million dollars out of that to get to jail and hire a couple more district deputy DAs. The answer is no, we can't. Our total county budget, to give you an idea, is a hundred and forty million dollars. What we pay in property tax to run the county is six million dollars. So where does the rest come? What is, what is? It's gas tax that goes to the state and then they return it to us. And it can only be used for roads. Can't hire that, we can't do other things with that. The same with Coos Health and Wells, a big department, about as big in itself as the entirety of the county. All that money that comes to run that is Medicaid money can fully be used for public health, mental health purposes. We cannot by law divert that away to have people to run our jail. So with that, I'll close my little into the clock if there's, if we have time, we'll.
We have time for some questions, if you would like to ask Commissioner Sweet, if you have questions.
And, and.
Fire away.
Ask hard questions. I don't want to waste time saying, hey, that's a good idea. I want to, if you have doubts, if you have concerns.
Don't butter the eye.
Right, correct my error real quick that I made earlier today.
Sure.
Uh, so, I'm Drew Farmer, I'm making a commission run. Some of the folks may have seen in the world this morning an article about an emergency declaration that I saw as a way to get some support. The way it presented in the article made it sound like it's an alternative to this levy. I want to be very clear to folks that there is not an alternative to this levy right now. On the council in Coos Bay, it scares me if this levy doesn't pass. And my family was out here in Lakeside for seventy years, and I got a pretty good idea what it means if it doesn't pass in Lakeside. So, uh, really want to encourage this to make it through. Very bad. That was not the way I wanted it to be.
If you don't think we have crime, I'm going to give you two examples. The sheriff.
Didn't we have to convince us of Lakeside?
Talked about, neither of us is going to be in Lakeside. And I don't, I, I wanted to, I can talk about one, but I'll have to wait, then I'll ask you the other second. The sheriff and I were having coffee with a young lady who had offered to help us with our campaign to inform people of what this was all about. About fifteen minutes into the conversation, the sheriff looked at his phone and he said, I'll have to wrap this up pretty quickly now. We just had a homicide. So we did that. Yesterday morning, stopped me as this is inappropriate. I came to the sheriff's office. One of the sheriffs, okay, it's okay, one of the, one of the deputies said, come on back here, I want to show you something. Went in the back room, there was a table. A big table. And it was absolutely covered with the most wicked looking personal armament you could possibly, machine guns, shotguns with shells that big around. Exaggerated, they're personal protective vests. Things that the normal people are not supposed to have. And this guy wasn't, he was just a belt. Then there was another pot. Over there, what's that? Well, they made their money by child pornography. It was their pension old bumper. So those types of criminals we can take care of. But they're here, we need a very effective public safety system, but we need it also for the lesser crime. One more thing, real quickly. The jail is not the only place we have to send people who have misbehaved. We have eight times ten times more people in parole probation than we have in the jail, eight times. And there, they receive counseling, they receive behavioral counseling, drug counseling, all those things, so. But we're not able to, we typically will have six hundred people in parole probation. But you can't just walk down the street and check in and parole probation, you gotta go through the system, you get arrested. Then the next step is being prosecuted. We're fourteen hundred cases behind. So the people that do the types of crimes that you would generally be put into parole probation for. They don't even get a chance to go to court. Yeah, they do eventually, maybe in their lifetime. So it isn't just the jail, we, we have, if we can get people through the prosecution system, we, we have a lot of capacity in parole probation to help a lot. So.
I do have a question, and it's just more predication. You had said that for the property tax, we'll round it up to a dollar per thousand. Average house is two hundred and fifty, we made it two hundred and forty thousand, which is close, just around numbers, that would be twenty dollars. As well as, we were correcting people on Monday, and I'll make sure to correct. And that is for the district attorney that said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said that we had forty nine beds, and if I'm not mistaken, Gabe said that we were gonna get up to ninety nine, I think we're at ninety eight, is how we're at. So, so we are at ninety eight.
We're looking for ninety eight.
Okay, and we're looking to get up to.
And we have been able to hire enough people to to get to ninety eight. I beg your pardon, if you're not there yet.
We've been at forty nine for years. But it's actually in July, the commissioners were able to give us enough money to pay the deputies that have not paid the tuition. Made it average, at that point, we saw enough influx in interest application, people were actually following that. That we are going to hire, it's about thirteen week training program to do whether they're gonna learn upon their own and helping rid of the invisible.
And, and so just to be clear, this levy is gonna increase the possibility up to one forty nine. Barring staff.
John, do you know, do you know the revenues that this will generate per year?
About five and a half million dollars the first year, and then it ends up fifteen percent.
That's actually on the summer portion of the ballot.
And again, this money, oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, my question is that they just passed the new law, the one in April Fool's Day. When they passed that law, which makes John, excuse me, our great sheriff, have to enforce it, do they give money to enforce it too? Well, here you go.
Well, that's, that's easy to blame this state. And I'm glad they passed that law. It was not good for us here locally. When you know, we, we I, I think it's our responsibility to pay for our local public safety system. And I think it's fortunate when the state passes a law that criminalizes things that are causing problems, even if it does hurt us a little bit financially.
You missed, I had no problem with that. Could have been any law, when they passed the law, they just put the burden back on the locals. Okay, so we have to keep paying and paying and paying.
And it depends on the law, there, there's sometimes they, they pick up the tab, but like they don't. They, they don't always do that to us.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank you all for coming out and explaining the whole situation to us, I really appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So the consent agenda this evening is the minutes of the quite a few minutes of the past administration, you might say. Does anybody want to move to, does anybody want to move any of these minutes to a separate discussion? You counsel? No? Okay. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All none in favor, raise your hand and say no. No. Okay. The consent agenda has been approved. All right, the next motion on the agenda is the letter of support for law enforcement. The law enforcement's ballot major, six dash two one three, this is just exactly what the gentleman we're talking about. I believe that our council needs to speak in one voice. So I didn't want to sign a letter of support without the support of my council. I make a motion to allow Mayor Mark Roach to sign a letter of support for the law enforcement ballot measure six dash one two, six dash two one three. I'll recognize any counselors at this point, does any counselor want to be recognized? No, okay. Then I will. Are, was there a second, I missed. Oh, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Of all sorts, okay. Thank you for catching that. So now we have a second on the measure. Would any of the counselors like to be recognized?
I'll speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I really appreciate you guys coming to talk to us directly. But I think it's really important to hear from the people who are handling all the issues. That when there's a levy like this, it's important that there's good information out there for people not that moved to work, so. I appreciate that, that one's.
Okay, are, does anybody else, would anybody else like to be recognized? I make a motion to close debate. All in favor, say aye. Okay, we're now going to take a vote on the ma, on the motion that I make a motion to allow Mayor Mark Roach to sign a letter of support for the law enforcement ballot measure six dash two one three. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All right, the motion passes. I'll make sure to get that signed this evening. Now on to our next agenda item. Election of a council president. Would one of our counselors like to make a nomination?
I would nominate Mr. Allen, Councilor Allen Pointer.
Are there any other nominations?
I think, I don't know. I will have to respectfully defy.
Are there any other nominations?
I was gonna say, I agree with Thomas.
Okay, so let's make a motion. I make a motion to elect Allen Pointer council president for the remainder of the year two thousand and four.
Twenty four.
Twenty four, two thousand and twenty four, right. Would any of the counselors like to be recognized? Okay, I make a motion to close debate. All right, all in, all of those in favor to elect Allen Pointer council president for the remainder of the year two thousand and twenty one, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. The motion carries, Allen Pointer is now council president. All right, then the next item on the agenda is our city manager, Rick Conbrough, is going to do the financial report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, usually we put the finance report on the consent agenda. But since this is the first official finance report that you have seen for approximately five months. I took it off the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda so that you could discuss it or ask questions. I have no new information to share beyond what the CPA report is within your packet. Everything seems to be in order, but I did not want you to miss an opportunity, your first opportunity to comment or ask questions as it relates to our finances. So my report is, and I have nothing to add, but this is your opportunity to make inquiries or request information as it relates to our finances. I intend to put it back on the consent agenda in May, as is our normal practice.
I took a long look at all of these numbers, many, many hours. And it all seems to make good, great sense to me. I, I hear a lot of rapping in the community about this handled money, you know. Fairly confident that there's not too many holes. There, we can all agree to prioritize things here and there, but I don't think there's a lot, yeah, none, none of the city councilors or the city managers walk away with your public money. And you should be confident of that. There was one other fund within here that got quite a bit of attention from me, and that is the tourism fund. And I noticed that in the last budget season, we budgeted quite a few dollars for some things to promote the community, get the community a little more attractive to visitors, and we have spent very little of that. Particularly tourism promotion, where there's almost twenty thousand dollars still left in that budget, and we only have a few months left in this budget. Whoopie beach maintenance, we budgeted fifteen thousand, and we spent less than five. And it seemed like with spring and summer coming, that we might could, could put some efforts there, and then city park maintenance, we spent zero dollars this year to take care of our city park. We could probably help things out. And then our Fourth of July fireworks, I had a conversation with city manager today, and you know, I think the, the bill is about thirty thousand dollars a year for those fireworks, and we just made a big fat payment, so. If the council would approve, I would like to start a discussion on how we can start doing some of these things so that we can look really nice for our visitors come the summertime.
We'll hold that off until we're finished with the financial report. Any other counselors would like to be recognized at this time?
I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Now, do I make a motion in the group this, or, okay. So I make a motion to approve the financial expenditures for the last five months, and correct me if I got that wrong. Does anybody want to second that? Okay, I recognize any counselors if they would like to comment on that. If that is a no, I make a motion to close debate. Do I have a second? Okay, all of those in favor of approving the expenditures for the last five months, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Okay. The motion is approved to approve the expenses for the last five months. All right. So the next one is an interesting situation. This is the requirements of planning commissioner. Now, my wife is part of that requirement process. Legally, there is no requirement to refuse myself from this debate and this discussion. Ethically, I myself personally think it's wrong. So I am going to go ahead and refuse myself and turn it over to Allen Pointer. And I'm gonna go ahead and lock out the room, just let me know, and, you know.
All right, we all have information from the filing commission on who they recommend for final commission, and it was only one. So we have a motion for
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Sarah Coats and Mary Gray, Mary Gray, City Lakeside Planning Commission for the term ending. I'm not sure this, when this term.
When expires on twenty five, one in twenty twenty seven.
You need to designate which candidate for which seat, please.
Yeah, okay, I'll correct myself. I move to appoint Sarah Coats to the Lakeside Planning Commission for a term ending in twenty twenty seven. Just the one person.
Well, I thought maybe we needed to use one of the terms, it's every separate.
Okay, so any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your hand, vote aye.
We get a second on that?
And all opposed, raise your hand. It looks like a thousand, sorry, folks.
I'll make the motion to point Mary Gray to the term which expires in January twenty twenty five.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You made the motion specific to the term ending in January twenty twenty five, which is how it's written on the request for council action. But those terms actually expire in December of the designated year.
Well.
The parliamentarian does not agree with that.
For ordinance thirteen to two seven five. Section three, so. Those terms expire in December of the designated year.
True. So the new term would start in January. You're right.
We need to rewrite this, or we continue?
Well, you, you made the motion for Ms. Coats specific to the year. specific to the year for the term without mentioning the month. But you have the motion.
Oh, uh, okay, well, this says January.
I understand.
Yeah, of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Need to amend your motion to December.
I amend my motion to uh let appoint Mary Gray to the position of the planning commission, which expires December twenty 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 twenty-four.
Actually. I used to keep the records on the terms for the commission. Really sure about this.
I consulted with the former chair of the planning commission, who gave me the spreadsheet, told me when the terms ended, and used as a basis of my information. And that's the information I have.
The spreadsheet only indicates what year their term expires. The ordinance says what month of the year.
Should we take what? Or clarify the information?
Yeah. Why don't we just appoint one for the longer term and one for the shorter term and move on, and we'll deal with the dates at a later time? So. Need to redo the resolution for sure.
Well, I didn't mention a month, but it's.
Right. And your motion, Tom?
I'm trying this again. That I uh make a motion to appoint Mary Gray to the shorter of the two term. Like.
Okay, any prescription of that? All in favor of Mary Gray for the shorter of the two terms, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And you're opposed, raise your hand and say no. Looks like Mary Gray is nominated or elected.
Okay. Yeah. Bring the mayor back. My back is here. You have an open chest. All right, I'll take the chair back. So now we are at appointments for the budget committee. Uh, Mister Holmback, would you give us some background on that?
Uh, we have two vacancies on the budget committee because two individuals on the council got promoted. Uh, and they both end in uh um the uh, they both end the shirt. So therefore, they're both for terms that end, and uh at the end of the shirt.
Right. And uh, the two people we have here.
We have three candidates.
Three people. One is Valerie uh. Rizzle.
Rizzle.
Rizzle. Rizzle, okay, thank you. Riz Lee, very good. Terrible at pronouncing names. Has everybody been able to uh look at our application?
Yes.
Okay, this is all I'm asking at this point in time. And then the second cand- candidate here is Randy Thomas. Has everybody been able to look at his application? Okay. Did I skip a question? No, just three. Page, oh, and the final person is Laura Sweman. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at her application? Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, I make a motion to appoint Valerie Ridley to the uh budget, to the City of Lakeside Budget Committee for a term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Second that.
Okay, uh, would any of the counselors like to be recognized? Oh, okay, I make a motion to close debate. Second, okay, all those in favor to appoint Valerie can you tell me on the name? Ridley, I'll get it right one of these days, to the uh City of Lakeside Budget Committees for a term ending in twenty twenty-five. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Or no. Okay. So congratulations, Valerie. There you are, okay. I know you've got your paperwork. Well, congratulations, and get ready to work hard.
What I do.
All right, um, we have two other candidates. I would like to make a motion since I know very well, uh, Randy Thomas. I would like to make a motion to appoint Randy Thomas to the City of Lakeside Budget Committee for a term ending in twenty twenty-five. Yeah, okay, great. Would any of the counselors like to be recognized? Okay, I'll close debate uh on the motion. I make a motion to close debate on the motion ahead of us. So. Great, um. I move to appoint Randy Thomas to the City of Lakeside Budget Committee for a term ending in twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no and raise your hand. All right, Mister Thomas, you've been appointed to the Lakeside Budget Committee. So the budget committees' positions are now completely. The next section. It's a big paperwork night tonight. The select, slightly authorized signers for the city's checking account.
May I speak to this, Mister Mayor? The process requires a resolution, so whatever determinations you make on both this matter as well as the signatures for the ARPA fund was, isn't listed, but also involves banking, um, will be actually implemented by a resolution next meeting, which I have to craft, but I need a decision from councils tonight as to whose names they want on that resolution.
Got you. So tonight's decisions will be uh in anticipation of drafting a resolution and directing uh Rick Holmbaum to assign the people to the resolution. Um. So currently, the process for review of the payment and invoices and bills continued from the previous council. And, and Rick, maybe you should uh talk to the whole process here. We'll all kind of.
So in our efforts to be as very, you know, open and transparent and have more than one set of eyes look at things, right now, our process is the city receives a bill or invoice. This bill or invoice is reviewed uh by myself and sometimes by a city staff member, if it's something like for the sewer plant. Um, that bill is sent to the CPA office. She actually uh does the um writes or types the checks. The following Wednesday, I pick up the checks, they come back here along with a list of all the invoices and bills for that week. At that point, the bill, the checks and the invoices sit here on the dais where council president Pointer sits, and they sit there until two counselors have come in and reviewed them, and they initial each line on the list of invoices. So two counselors can come in, uh, this week it was counselor Adam uh Hand and counselor Tom Miller. Um. I just send an email out saying they're here, and the first two that show up, review them, they initial the invoice list, and at that time, then I sign the checks. And usually the next day, the checks are mailed out. So that is our process. Our payroll is really all automatic deposit. We have three very part-time library employees that require paychecks, and those don't go through the council process, but the rest payroll is all automatic deposit. But as it relates to our payables, uh, we saw two counselors look at it. Um, um, I see both an invoice, and I get the background on it, and then I sign it after two counselors have initialled the invoice. That is our current process. We don't have a rule as it relates to how many signatures are required on the check, although there are two signs, two lines on the check, uh, we've just been doing with one. Um, and while during the absence of not having a council, I was still having the three members of the, the three existing members um of the council uh still come in on a weekly basis and sign and initial the invoice list. So that's our process now.
Okay. All right, good. Now, also counselor Pointer can do the same exact thing that you can as far as signing the checks.
Currently, the only two authorized check signers is council president Pointer and myself.
And then for counselor Pointer to sign the check would have to be two separate counselors if he is actually signing the check.
Correct, he could not initial the invoice list and be a check signer.
And, and how many, how many um of the how many? What's the frequency of requiring a signature within a week? Uh, or signing a check within a week? For example, are there bills that have to be paid unless?
Very rarely, because if there is, I can send the invoice electronically prior to the Wednesday of me going in. I mean, we got the fireworks bill on Monday, I emailed it in to the CPA on Tuesday, and I picked up check on Wednesday, and it got signed or initial today. So, so uh we can short circuit it because every Wednesday I take them into town, and I can easily electronically send an invoice in to get done.
So if there is ever existed a time where two people don't exist, will be. No. Great. Um. So one of the questions in front of us is um. See, how are we going to do this one? Well, it's, the motion is all in one, but why don't we go ahead and do that anyways? Um. I move to designate Alan Pointer and Rick Holmbaum as the authorized check signers on behalf of the City of Lakeside. The city requires one ch- one signature on all checks that two members of the council review invoices and bills prior to the signing of the checks. That's the motion in front of us. Does somebody want to second it?
Okay.
Okay, seconded. And now I'm going to open it up for um discussion. Would any of the counselors like to be recognized? I would. Yes, Al.
I don't believe more people than that.
Yeah.
I mean, because sometimes one of the people may not be available. So it's a moving thing, maybe someone else.
And any other counselors, would they? Um. So should, would you like to make a motion to amend the originals? Um, motion?
Well, is it necessary to appoint you again, or how about? I think it's necessary to appoint you because we have a new council, and they need to make a new designation.
Um. But wasn't your question as to whether we need to have more than two?
Yes.
Would you like to amend the motion to?
I don't want to amend it.
But you, you can't, you can't change it, do you?
Well, we just, we need some people to volunteer to do.
I would.
Okay.
So we just need to amend it with their names on it all.
Um. So I make a motion to amend the current motion as stated. I move to designate Tom Mellon, Alan Pointer, and Rick Holmbaum as to be authorized to be check signers on the D half of the City of Lakeside, and that the city require one number of signatures for all checks, and that two members of the council review the invoices and the bills prior to the signing of the checks. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, uh, would any of the counselors like to be recognized? No, I make a motion to close debate on the sub- sub-motion. Right, all in favor of the sub-motion as I just stated it? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the new motion stands as I move to designate Tom Mellon, Alan Pointer, Rick Holmbaum to be authorized check signers on behalf of the City of Lakeside, and that the city require uh require one number of signatures for all checks, and that the, and that two members of the council review the invoices and the bills prior to the signing of the check. Would any of the counselors like to be recognized? Make a motion to close debate. Right. Great. Uh, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the measure as stated, please raise your hand and say no. The motion passes.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to request that we uh also include a separate motion regarding the signature cards for the ARPA fund.
All right. So that motion would be.
It's not in the packet.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you want to make a motion? Great. Got all written down.
Uh. If you want, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
I need to get that.
This is my own chance here, or do you want to do it off of the?
I'll just, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wait, um, I make a motion to appoint uh Rick Holmbaum, Alan Pointer, and Tom Miller as authorized ARPA fund signers. Yeah. Um.
Okay, um. Are there any counselors who'd like to be recognized? Motion to close debate. Okay. All right, uh, all in favor of closing debates, say aye.
Aye.
Great, um. Just read the motion again.
Uh, the motion for uh Alan Pointer, Tom Miller, and Rick Holmbaum to be authorized ARPA fund signers.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Yeah. All right, so the motion passes. Okay, now we are up to the appointment of budget officer.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this?
Yes, please.
Oregon Public Budget Law requires the governing body to appoint a designated budget officer. It's part of the nine steps of having your city budget approved. The only rule is that no one who serves on the budget committee can be the budget officer. Other than that, you are empowered to appoint whoever you wish to be the budget officer. And write the budget and propose the budget to the budget committee, which needs to be written by April twenty fourth.
Great. I make a motion to appoint Rick Holmbaum to be the city budget officer for the twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five city of Lakeside budget. All right. Any, I recognize any counselors, those who want to be recognized? Go ahead and close debate. Great, a motion, I move, I make a motion to appoint Rick Holmbaum to be the city budget manager, budget officer for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five city of Lakeside budget. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, the next one is the adoption of the budget calendar. I believe all the counselors had an opportunity to revisit the budget counter. I make a motion to adopt the proposed budget calendar for twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five city of Lakeside budget. Do I have a second? Would any counselors like to be recognized?
Who's seconding it? I heard.
Okay, counselor would like to be recognized? Make a motion to close debate. All in favor, say aye. I move to adopt the proposed budget calendar for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five city of Lakeside budget as enclosed in the packet. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Declaration of surplus property, that I believe where we're at now. Future planning and divination. Of future planning and priorities. We were talking about that in our workshop. Do we want to formalize any types of future planning or priority in this meeting? I myself, and it looks like this is a discussion, there is not a motion, involves this. I myself am a strong believer that code enforcement is the number one priority of the citizens of Lakeside and we'd like to pursue that as soon as possible. And with with full force, is there a consensus?
Yeah, I think that's, at our workshop, that's pretty much what we discussed and the need and the importance to to move forward aggressively to that.
Right, I agree. You know, going through this election process, speaking with a lot of citizens was the very first thing to come out of everyone's mouth.
So now I want to pin people down. Where are we going to have our first workshop?
Does the staff have a recommendation, like how long it might take to put together information on that or?
Well, the draft ordinance that I included in your workshop packet, quite honestly, is where I see starting the discussion. Looking at the material you already have, I, I'm trying, I mean, I can give you data and as to what kind of complaints I'm dealing with. But as it relates to what it is you want in the way of enforcement and process. The, the two handouts that I gave you, one from the League of Oregon Cities and one from our city attorney, I think is your starting point. And I have not really, no, no additional information.
At this point in time, one of the things that we do want to look at is cost. You know, how, you, you know, where, because I don't want to run into the same situation we ran into before where we decided we were going to have a port and then turn around and go, oh, well, that's not it, but we don't have money. So there will be costs involved, so we, we need to realize what that is. I think we also need a definition of what we're all talking about. And this is things that we can talk in, in the workshop about what we're talking about, when we talk about code enforcement. Not all code enforcement is the same. So there are quite a few different items. I don't want to, since we're working on future planning and priority at this point in time. We're more looking at what our schedules are like. And I think at this point in time we're also running against the budget.
Mayor, I mean.
Yes.
Um, we have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty third. I think instead of a workshop where we can't make any decision, why can't we bump it into that special meeting where we come to a decision on the ordinance? Kind of, you know, because I mean, that, that week we have a special meeting, then some of us are going to be at in Blackmoss for the conference. And then the next week is budget process begins. So I really think if we try to concrete that special meeting, we best.
Would any of the other commissioners or counselors like to be recognized?
I think as, as soon as we can get some conversations going, be at a special meeting, a workshop, whatever, the sooner the better.
Okay, I have a little problem with next thing. Personnel issues with you know, with the, with the regular code enforcement meeting. It, it seems, just have a feeling that it doesn't seem really fair to the person who's being reviewed at that time. You know, because you kind of have mixed audiences on that. It's just my feeling, so maybe like, can you comment to, well?
My understanding was we were planning to do, have a discussion of evaluation methodology at special meeting, not to actually conduct the evaluation.
Correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I don't see a problem with putting that in there. But then remember, we still have to evaluate with your home on in a short period of time. But we're going to run a short meeting for that when it comes up. Okay, so on, as discussed in our meeting at the workshop, and by the way, everybody, going to the workshops is great. That's where you're going to get most of your information. I know most of you guys sitting out there are going, what the heck are these guys talking about? So, so I encourage people, if you can make it, to make it to the workshops. If we want to define the workshop as simply coming up with an evaluation, I have no problem with including the code enforcement that day.
If we don't work top or a special meeting on the twenty third, because I was.
It will still have to be a special meeting in regards to setting the evaluation criteria. I'm, I'm assuming, Mr. Holland?
No, it doesn't need to be a special meeting because the only reason why you, no, not the only. Since you're talking about the evaluation process, you're not doing an evaluation. So coming together and working on a draft evaluation form, and I will provide a couple for you to look at. And giving me consensus as directions to which one you want to use in the future is fair workshop. Direction.
Good, good. So why don't we set the workshop to be to develop an evaluation system for the city manager and to also start working on code enforcement.
I disagree with workshop. I think we should just hold a special meeting so we can. I mean, if we do a workshop, we can't do it, we were going to have to set another meeting or wait till the May meeting and do anything again. So if we just have a special meeting, we can.
We do a workshop one hour prior, like we did before, and a special meeting right behind it, you know?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
And what will we be doing in the special meeting now?
Then that would be our evaluation.
Adopting the hiring criteria or the evaluating criteria?
Yeah.
Possibly the ordinance for code enforcement, changing that.
So alls we want to do in the special meeting is adopt the hiring criteria.
Evaluation process.
The evaluation process. Okay.
Just said, just happened in our workshop before. We already had the meetings set for the twenty third.
Right, yes.
And if we could lump the evaluation process and do a code enforcement workshop all in one. I mean, I personally think it's a way to get it done quicker. I don't really know things, but if you guys disagree with me, that's fine.
Would any of the other counselors like to be recognized at this point?
I would. Yeah, I agree because a hundred percent probably other people out there in Lakeside right now, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, but it's pretty darn close. When it comes to fixing up the city, when it comes to enforcing what's going on in the city. Also, when you're talking about code enforcement, we're talking sanitary, safety. I just think we just need to get it moving because I think that's what the people on Lakeside want.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on this so everybody's clear as to what this meeting is going to actually be. And the meeting is on the twenty third.
Yes.
Okay. So on April twenty third, we are going to have a special meeting. I make a motion that we're going to have a special meeting to go over the evaluation criterion. And also to work on code enforcement. That's my motion. Any counselors like to speak to that?
With a workshop prior.
Okay. We'll make an event to the workshop prior. Yeah, workshop can be for a second, putting those details out. So we want to have the workshop first.
Yeah.
All the, so I open it up for debate, close, I close debate. All in favor, say aye. Great. So now we're settled on the special meeting on the twenty third. What's going to happen? One of the time of day will be six o'clock.
Is it five o'clock for the?
We're at five o'clock for the workshop, correct?
I think that's too early. I think we need to start at six for the workshop and then.
A meeting at seven?
Yes.
Great. So, so I, I believe I heard the motion to be that we will have a special meeting at six o'clock to do the criteria evaluation, followed by a seven o'clock workshop on law on code enforcement. So the.
Opposite. Correct.
So.
Seven o'clock, so six o'clock workshop on law enforcement, seven o'clock meeting on criteria.
Correct, correct. Even though I didn't make the motion to change the motion. Let's just go a little bit back. All right, good. Excuse me. So now we are up. Make sure. And I'm just assuming on agenda sixteen that that's our main priority. We don't want to work on any other priorities at this point. We just want to have a single focus down, so to get this thing done.
At least to get.
There, there will be other things that come off any given time. Everything like that. And we'll just deal with those that stick out. Right. Item number sixteen. Thank you everybody for your patience. So item number sixteen is the declaration of surplus property. So we have an old tractor out there that well, Mr. Holland, how old is that truck?
It's a nineteen eighty. It says nineteen oh eight. That was the title. That's a nineteen eighty purchased. We don't know the date.
I would ask you for a depreciation schedule. But I don't think it's been thirty forty years. I, I don't know of very many pieces of equipment that, you know, lasts that long, including the surplus. Uh, this is the only item that you want to authorize to make it as a surplus item.
Yes.
And at this point in time, this piece of property has no functional.
Backflow through, yes.
And it's actually broken right now?
Yes.
And the repairs are.
Beyond the value of the instrument.
Well, yeah, beyond zero. Okay. All right. So would somebody else like to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion. I move to declare the Mitsubishi tractor lower attachment and surplus property for the city of Lakeside and authorize the disposal of set equipment for state rules and practices.
All right, I recognize, I'll recognize any counselors who'd like to speak on the subject. Hey, I'm going to go ahead and I make a motion to close the day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. I move to declare the Mitsubishi tractor and lower attachment as a surplus property for the city of Lakeside. And authorize the disposal of set equipment for state rules and practices. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say no. Right, motion passes.
Asking for this next agenda.
All right, we're going to open up the discussion on the agenda in regards to city of Lakeside. Request for funding of Lakeside Business Association Community Events for twenty twenty four. The process will be that the Lakeside Business Association will make a presentation. And of course, at that point, we can ask questions and then council will move back into the regular voting process. And Adam wants to make a statement before we start. Go ahead.
As you may know, I've been president of Lakeside Business Owners for the last year. For those of you who do not know, the LBO is a local business organization. It operates exactly the same as a chamber of commerce. For those of you who do not know, the LBO is a local business organization. The LBO operates exactly the same as the Chamber of Commerce. Before being sworn in as counselor, I resign my position on the LBO board. As a local business owner, I will remain a member of the organization. Because the RBO operates as a nonprofit, my membership is exempt from notification and participation restrictions. I presented this question to the Organ Ethics Commission for clarification. Today, I did hear back from an investigator who was able to confirm my situation does not present a conflict of interest. To play it safe, I'm gonna refrain from participating in actions related to the LBO. Until the IRS has finalized the nonprofit status of the LBO. I mean, it's a couple of year process to, to get later finalization back from the IRS. I expect we'll have that in the next six months. At that time, I'll. We're officially a, a, a nonprofit and I'll may participate in these conversations. But as for tonight's conversation, like Mark, I'll step outside and I'll do that as well.
Okay, so who would like to present tonight?
That would be me. April, April eighth, July. And. Here we have, um. We're here to, uh, request spending for them. Um, so for them, we have our, um, the first one was the experience wayside. And then that is where we call it, it's called our policy, we live in, in fourth through to the fifteenth. Um, and it showed the, the vehicle behind it is usually show cases. So, you know, the visitors, where Lakeside has to offer, the beaches, the rates. And, um, that's kind of the, the reasoning behind that and where that came from. There'll be vendors like music, um, business representation where we do a kind of a golden ticket. Where you can go around and get, you know, ticket stamps for free T-shirts, you know, the Lakeside T-shirt and that's it. And our second event is on the fourth of July and we currently have a permit for West Beach. Um, and it's the same thing we did last year where we have vendors and some music and some. Uh, food trucks and just kind of enhanced the experience with people coming in for the fireworks. But we tend to feel that we're missing an opportunity in the past. Um, you know, the fire department or different volunteers went out and they would gather donations. So at kind of to, to, to help give back as the business owners, we'd like to. Put volunteers at the instance and pay donations. And bring that event and then give that money back to the tourism fund for fireworks for next year. Then our third event. Is what's called kind of treasures and it started out with the lodge and it's like so. And the thought, the thought of it is to, um, you know, the site is full of history. Um, and so this is, uh, vendors, antique and business vendors. Uh, we have live music. It's a three day event. Um, in July nineteen to twenty first. We already have a vintage boat club that's in the county and they'll be having a boat show Saturday and Sunday. And we also are working with the cart club to come on Sunday in a classic part but. To, uh, to kind of participate in that, that the whole theme. Um, with the, with the interest that we, that we have, that we've had. Um, we kind of think this could be one of the bigger events like so we're kind of really excited about that. And then the, um. Our fourth is the kind of around the years and wearing likes of Lakeside. We just all kind of went through and, and that's the, the craft vendors and the gift vendors and live music and entertainment and. Food and that way gives us the city an opportunity to kind of show off, light our city up and. And have a great time of this. So here's the breakdown. So the LBO was, we're dedicated to providing the safe events, sanitary events. Um, and, you know, for our visitors and residents. The portion of the funds, a lot of the person that went to go for the sanitation and western city. Part of party, you know, clean every day. Um, advertising is another important aspect. For, uh, successful events to get the people in, um, and since. The T O T funds are generated by overnight stays in the city. Um, you plan on advertising in the fifty plus mile radius of Lakeside along with local. The social media advertising as well, banners, posters, and some of the things you've seen in the past. Uh, to get. People into Lakeside. And then the promotions are. To enhance our, our visitors' experience here, like, uh, for example, we golden ticket that we do experience like sites. Where they go around with differences and they get a big science. They gotta pay home and advertise like so. And then as far as the concern, there's a concern with the. Getting the. The conditions for funding, considering every hand. Um, what we'd like to have it budgeted before each event and then what would actually spend after each event before the next funding is available. We're gonna have a problem with it. So we'll make that.
I have a question in my face. Um, so please, uh. Event total from T L T, that's what you are asking from us for each event or?
Yes.
That, okay, that's not the total cost of the event.
No.
Okay.
Those is the, the forty five, ten western. From the party training and advertising.
Okay.
Have a couple of questions. I come from a business background, so very particular when it comes to money. So, uh, one of them was, a lot of these is actually already been answered, so that's very good. Uh, first off was the tax exempt status. Uh, I realize that you're not there yet. You're, you're not considered by the IRS to be a charitable organization, even though on this stage you might be a mutual benefit organization. Okay. Um, so in the past, have you provided the city with a breakdown of your expenses?
Yeah. Maybe a receipt.
You gave receipts and, uh. To show where all the money went and everything like that. Would you be willing to also open up your books? And, and the reason I bring this up and just like explain to you why is. Lakeside doesn't have a lot of money, even though that T L T fund right now looks really great. I mean, there are other opportunities out there that can be used. If somebody, you know, if the National Bass Association comes by and says, hey, we wanna have our. Our national meet on Ten Mile Lake, you know, where that money is going. That type of thing because we're talking about, you know, we're talking about getting tourism into Lakeside. So would you be willing to open up your books? And I'm just talking about LBO books. Uh, to let us see where money is going and how we're, you know, how it's being used and that it's actually getting back. Okay. Specifically, now you've actually answered most of this question, uh. How do you specifically, how do you feel that your past expenditure have met the criterion? Or the P L T line? Now remember the transient lodging tax is for, uh, per marketing. Events and special events and festivals. How do you feel that your expenditures have done that?
I think what we're, we're asking for right now is for the, um, more line of public safety. And, you know, sanitation, um, public health, that type of thing. Um, advertising, you can do the advertising. And we need to advertise, you know, bar them to just local, because that's where we're generating the money.
Right.
Is the, uh, the organized state and the credit bar turn these, our these bar hotels and that.
Yeah, I definitely, I can see the advertising. I'm having a hard time understanding toilets as a tourist.
I'm sure it's public safety, the public safety. We can't, we can't have a thousand people that are just registered. Areas to wash their hands, maybe for the sanitary. As well as providing the traffic.
So you're looking at an expense that is for, that is not actually being used. For tourism promotion at that point.
So you, we need, we need to have the restroom and the sanitary condition to be able to host, you know, a, a large. We can't have a thousand people there and expect them to use the games restroom for the lighting restroom. We need, we need, they need places where they can wash their hands so they can throw out trash and stuff from on the sidewalks and that.
Oh yeah, any event would have to require that. Okay, those are the questions that I have, um. Do any of the other counselors have any questions at this point?
I, I think we, I think you already stated it, we would look at funding these one, one event at a time, not as a. As a total package.
Yeah. That way it's not a, a lump sum, something in.
Right.
If they have an improvement to go ahead and.
Yes.
If you're kind of running short on time. So late and so late.
Yeah, I, I, I'm used to setting up an event.
Yeah.
Day after the other event.
So what, what, uh, Rick wanted to see is that we showed, we showed you guys the budget. Um, we received a lot of money for that. We show what the money meant before we get the next funding.
Any other questions? Oh, can we fund the organizations not? Would be a question for staff?
I believe we can, and I believe I've checked legal on this one as well, um, because there's other. The city gives funds to other activities that are not even organizations. Yeah. No, I don't think there's any issue here.
Then the IRS likes to see a year's worth of operation before they.
I have a question for Rick. On the bottom, it says financial impact, expenditures of about twelve thousand dollars. It's from the fifteen thousand budget, this, so would it be under ten, right?
Well, theirs is ten, but we've already spent fifteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
Let's first make sure, I'm sorry, went out of protocol. Every counselor gets to speak once first and then, then we'll do the second. Is there any other counselors that want to speak on their first time? No, okay, here I go. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
I was just gonna say, I thought we were asking Mr..
You're only, we're only asking questions at this point. We're not, it's not a, we just started a discussion. Correct, okay. Okay, so go ahead and ask, Adam.
What impact does your previous?
Well, I think if we look at the, over the last year and a half, you, you can see the increase in K O T. I know the lodge, we've done. Five employees total, running the whole operation of. But bringing people in, people who are staying, we are completely booked for the kind of stretches already. The boat club, they're gonna stay for four days. Um, and they're looking for alternatives because they have more people left. Um, that doesn't, you know, the parts are over. So we're seeing a lot more people coming and staying. So that's what we wanna continue. That's definitely exactly.
All right. So does that include all the questions and all the presentation? Thank you much. You were very thorough. All right, so and now we're, um. Back in regular, you know. Do any of the counselors want to discuss the surplus point? Now, this is just discussion. We have, nobody's made a motion yet. Or is somebody ready to make a motion? Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion? If you'd like to discuss, okay.
Yeah, so, um, well, I think the events sound like a great idea. And the public sanitation is an important safety aspect of those events. Um, I took the time to review the, the statutory restrictions. On expanding tourism fund. And. It would allow the city to use those funds for. Advertising, publicizing, distributing information for the purpose of attracting and welcoming tourists. Or marketing special events. And festivals designed to attract tourists. So it's for these events, it's limited to the advertising and marketing. In the funds, admiring what else, the funds can't be spent for the actual. Expenses and putting on the event, just for the advertising and marketing. And so the request here is to spend. From the tourism funds to provide those sanitary measures. And I don't think we can do that. We would have to fund those out of the general fund. If we were to do that.
Further comments on that?
Um. Aye.
And remember, before we get in to the actual debating of it, uh, somebody needs to make a motion. We're discussing right now. But I just don't wanna get to the point where we're arguing over the actual motion itself.
Well.
Continue.
Before we make a motion, we should probably clarify that we can even. Make a motion for the spending of the T L T dollars.
You don't feel comfortable with making a motion?
I'm good. I, that's not what I said. I was just saying, I think, um, I was under the impression. That I, I thought something different than that. So I'm not too sure and I would really like to get that clarified before we. I would love to support the events, um, in any way that the city can, but we should probably clarify that we even can, since. Rob is bringing up this point.
So do we need a legal opinion? I make a motion, I'll make, I'll do it then. I'll make a motion that we need a legal opinion before we can, uh. Make a motion on the T O T, T L T expenditures. Would any of the, um, counselors like to be recognized at this point?
Yeah, I think. We're not saying no. I think we just need to make sure.
Our, our past things they injured. We used words for.
That's why I'm confused, yeah.
Okay. When I order here, public discussion was the beginning. You know, we, we had the other, so. Okay, so. Did anybody second my motion? Okay, good. Um, did any other counselor want to be recognized at this point?
The first, the first event is. The vintage or the.
Experience, like say.
So yeah, we're we're good timeline, yeah.
Right, if there's no other uh counselors that would like to be recognized, then make a motion to close the day. And the motion is to uh get a legal opinion on whether uh. Toilets can be used. Uh, T L T funds can be used for items such as toilets and operational. And other operational items which are not part of the marketing.
Question, so T L T funds are used for fireworks, correct?
Well, we close debate. The clar- so your clarification is, you can answer a question, I believe. Um, you're just asking whether the T L T funds. Yeah, that's a, that's a different. Yes, yes. Obviously, there's a different ways that that's approached, though, about who's paying for it. Um, okay. So that is the motion on the table, all in favor, say, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries, um, now I move to uh table the. T L T request until the May meeting. Wait a second.
Excellent.
Does any counselor like to be recognized? Yeah, I close the page. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Good, motion passes. All right. Yeah, now. We are at uh. Committee reports. So Alan, did you have any? First off, airport, do we have any information on the airport? Okay. Do we have any information on the wires?
Yeah, actually. Mr. Mayor, I would I would defer to Mr. Mayor if he'd like to, if not, I would, I will comment on.
I will do what the council wants. I don't have a topic in my lap board, I relax.
Relax.
So. I didn't want to down for you.
No, I, this is, uh, we had a meeting Tuesday this week, uh. Had uh people from our partnership there discussing uh funding for projects in Benson Creek. Uh, wetlands restoration project in Big Creek, wetlands restoration project. And future projects and. And uh talked a bit about the future of the T L V P. Looking down the road, you know, this next year, next summer, these projects, but. Ten years down the road. A vision and a, and working with other uh. Organizations around the county and the state to just further the hell of our lake.
Always the help.
It's getting better.
I like that.
I believe.
Probably all you can say, yeah. Not perfect, that's for sure. Okay, um, water district. Into the water district. Okay. Ten Mile Lake Association. And I'll be assigning committees this week. You know. Do something, so, oh, we are missing.
There, yeah, yes, uh, and that was brought up at the T L P P, someone asked me if we were gonna have with new council, if they would have. Uh, representative from the city of T L A.
So, and didn't you mention that you want to do that?
Uh, I didn't mention that I wanted to do that.
I didn't mention that he wanted to.
Yes.
Okay, Jim.
I've actually been to the first meeting, Nick.
You are actually on it now officially.
Yeah.
Um, the fire district is um. And we had a monthly board meeting last night and selected C B construction to do the seismic upgrade for the fire department. Uh, we had a committee that then do interviewed the four contractors that responded and fix C B construction. Here to discuss the need, the continuing discussion of the need for second fire station on the north side of the track and stuff about issue. There were seventy three calls and uh. Emergency medical calls in in March, but are tall, fifty two percent of them on the north side of the track. And we discussed rents that we need to be able to get. Right, got a question, it it kind of came up and uh something I received in all my email stuff now as mayor. How many uh. Lift assists does the fire department typically do in the month, would you know that? So here, one or two, so. Uh, some of those emergency medicals. And we have. Believe there were fifty three of those. Yeah, because I haven't called this gentleman back yet, but uh, the Bay Area Hospital is wanting to do a. A survey, you know, to find out where medical needs are here. I just saw their brochure at this point, so I don't really know what it's about, but. I'll look into it further.
Which is probably.
Yeah, yeah, and if that comes down to it, we just, you know, where they can grab information. All right, so. Obviously, a good choice for Lakeside Business Owners Association would be, yeah. I can go ahead and say that you can do that. All right, well, you can add to that, I'll take on that response, um. Well, you know what they're up to right now. But is there anything else that you guys?
Well, uh, I think you guys just heard a little, a lot of it. Uh, about the events that are being planned for the next six months or so. Uh, outside of those events, the L V O just has the the goal of. Uh, helping to improve the economy of the city of Lakeside and being a. A support structure for business owners, sometimes being a business owner can be lonely. And you know, you got a neighbor business or someone in town to talk to, share an idea to get a thought that is playing that role as well, so that's. So we're about a year old organization, so far it's kind of been going pretty well.
Hey, and Dave, you actually alluded to this in your presentation. I've heard a lot of people talk about how in the past, all the businesses used to put out a jar for fireworks. And that type of thing, maybe something to consider that the business association does the same type of thing.
Seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, just mentioning it, you know. What what you guys do is your thing. All right, great, so now we are up to the city manager report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, just a few uh follow up items from our uh work session. Um, you may have noted, so, may have noticed some green paint on our Eighth Street roller coaster ride. Um. What we are doing is prioritizing um. The the bad ones, essentially what you see is numbers, and it is our intent to put out for bid. Uh, the fixing of our Eighth Street roller coaster, so it is not as bumpy. The Coos County Road Department has come up with a. Plan that will contribute additional funds to this project. And. Once we know that their budget is approved for next fiscal year, July one, uh, we'll be in a much better. Place as it relates to the city kicking in funds in partnership with the county. Now, I already intend to spend about ten thousand out of street and about ten thousand out of sewer. Because it is a sewer manhole issue um involving a street, not ours. But uh, so that's where I see about uh the expenditure for from the city's side. And I'm working with dire partnership and doing the bidding and uh construction oversight. For the repair of those manholes, I am proceeding on this project, uh, knowing that uh. Um, I'll be spending funds and I would expect that I will have um. Some bids to award which the council need to award, uh, your may council me.
Um, I'm sorry, how much was the county kicking in?
Right now, it's looking at thirty.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Little strip going across the.
That's a different county project, it's all county, it's, they took out a culvert and they need to replace it, but it's been too cold to. To, it's too large to put in cold patch, and so uh, the, it's just the weather. In that scheduled project. Um. The budget needs to be published on April twenty fourth, and so next week I will be uh working extensively on the budget. Um, a trivia note is that in my four months here. I have now had seven requests for new addresses on undeveloped lots. Now you think about. Yeah, for me to have seven requests for new addresses in order so that they can order. Building supplies and other things to build on seven lots within the four months that I've been here. It's a little bit. Strange based upon our history, but uh, it's just out there. Uh, the property owner of two forty five Rainbow has become active again in trying to address his issues. Um, as it relates, as you know, the city has a lien on that particular piece of property since. Not having a council has been interesting because if a council places a lien on a piece of property. I am not empowered to release it. Therefore, it has been there for the last four months and will be there until the council. Uh, makes a decision and working with the city attorney, I am um, so we're saying negotiations. And you may receive a request in May to uh agree to an agreement of. Signing a authorized me to sign a letter. That would um. Be a promissory note that we would release lien if the place got clean.
And how much is the lien on the property right now?
I think it's seventy. Um, but I work with the city attorney on that, and you may see that also at your May agenda. Um, this week Dennis is off for three days on P T O, Tina is off for two days this week. Uh, next Friday, I will have my annual physical in Salem, will not be here. And if I get the budget published on time, I intend to take two days of P T O. Um. Code enforcement right now, I'm mostly dealing with noise complaints. Um, and believe it or not, I cannot locate a copy of a single letter. Previously distributed by the city of Lakeside relating to a noise complaint. I am having to write the letter from code in an original format, and I have no template. In which we have given warning letters or citation letters for noise complaints. And I find that sort of hard to believe. But currently I have issues on both North Thirteenth and North Fifteenth, uh, both in the Hundred Block. It's not against each other, but it's in individual residences with noise issues in that particular area. You had a question, Counselor Wood?
Yeah, I was the previous. City manager, I was under the impression that you had to have like a noise reader. To be able to like enforce that, like and be there listening to it.
Our code does require a noise reader in order to, a decimal reader, in order to do some of the activities. But our code also uh is explicit about hours in which there is noise emitted. That is heard within the neighboring abode. And for, so there's some phasology in there in which that is required, there's also some phasology in there where that number is not needed.
Could you also ask data on the outside helping with the emergency?
The outside what?
The outside help.
Oh, well, are we referring to our alphabet? D E Q is involved with four properties here in town now. Um, and two forty five Rainbow is one of the ones that received a letter on the twenty fourth of March from D E Q. Um, and the one out on North Lake has received uh D E Q uh involvement. And they are working on a letter for the one on Airport Way um as well, but that one has not yet gone out. But um, I have engaged uh involved the D E Q staff. Um, because A, they have a bigger hammer than we do, and um. People are more scared of the, of them than they are of us, so uh, uh, so, but no.
And we haven't broken.
So. I don't, um, but actually additions that I have besides what is in the packet, my staff report is on the back. Page of the packet, um, or should have been, and um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I did have a citizen contacted me about one of the noise complaints, and I really didn't have a answer. For her as far as what the next step was, were you able to, are we ever making any sort of progress on those, or is there?
I can provide a letter outlining what our policies, rules and ordinances are. And what the options are that the city could go to if it becomes a consistent problem.
Any other counselor like to be recognized? Very much. All right, we're gonna go ahead and do mayor and council comments. We'll start all the way down on the end there with Mr. Jim.
I have no comments at this time. Um. Like first day of school again. New council, looking forward to, looking forward to uh getting some stuff done and. Thanks for everybody, thank you, Mr. Rover for the presentation and everybody that spoke. Good thanks.
At the end of this month, I'll be going to the spring L L C conference, I'm really excited for that, I learned so much in the fall, so. I'm really looking forward to that and absorbing more very important information, um. I'm really excited to work with all the new council members and the old council members, and um. I think we're gonna be busy in the next couple of months with all the budget meetings, and we're really trying to pack in special meetings and workshops, and hopefully everyone can. Come see those and get involved, and um, we can really be transparent, work together, so I'm excited, yeah, thank you.
Right, um, I like to talk a lot. Uh, first off, you see up there, it says how to contact the mayor. That is my email address, on the third and the fourth week, uh, I'm gonna actually be in council. So anybody can walk in and ask me questions, the purposes that of that is simply to open up communication lines. Between the city and the citizens as to what's going on, so that's third and fourth week. On Tuesday and Thursday, nine to eleven AM, some of those hours I might. Have already set up an appointment with the citizen or something like that, but I'm planning on leaving those uh hours open. That's, that's the citizens, it's time to go and talk to me, say hi, or anybody else. Want to talk to me about fishing or whatever, I I definitely will be listening, and um. There's that. There's that. I think that's really about it, uh. I, again, thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to be mayor of Lakeside. And I just hope I can do my best.
Like the mayor just mentioned, I also want to thank the citizens of Lakeside for this opportunity, uh. I, for one, plan to take it very seriously, and I look forward to working with everybody here on this council. I feel like we probably have one of the strongest teams that we've had in, in a while. Uh, we had a budget, or not a budget, I'm sorry, we had a workshop the other, the other day, and it seemed as if the whole crew was committed to. Really putting in the extra time it's gonna take to get some things done. We. We have a pile, uh, on top of us, so we, we really all need to work hard together, and I think everybody's ready for that. Uh, I'm also going to the League of Oregon Cities Conference at the end of the month, and. Seems like a huge learning opportunity, and I look forward to coming back and sharing some of what I wanna learn. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to everybody who's here in the audience and wants to join on Zoom, um. Citizen participation is really important, and your input is really important to our work, too. Thank you.
Well, I too would like to thank everyone that's attended tonight on Zoom in person and. Even part of the meeting. We've had a little vacation, but now we're back, we're back in the group, and, you know.
No more vacations for eight months. Well, very good. On that note, I am going to adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight oh nine. Thank you very much.